All right, I call the Wednesday, April 5th, 2023 council meeting to order. The council members and I met at 5:00 PM in the sixth floor council conference room for a briefing to discuss tonight's agenda. At 5:30, we moved here to the first floor chambers to conduct the council meeting in person. And because we encourage community involvement, we invite the public to also join us in person or participate remotely via Zoom or view on BCAT. Note that Councilmember Quinn Dennehy is attending remotely via Zoom tonight. First up on tonight's agenda, we have the mayor's report. Welcome, Mayor Wheeler.
All right. Good afternoon, Council. Council President, it's good to see you. Got to see Counselor Fry today. We had another tour of Mills Crossing, trying to secure more funding for that project. It was good to see you, Counselor. All right, Dave, if we can get to the first slide. I've got more slides than usual tonight. A lot of news to share with you. The first one is this solar plus storage grant. It's from a Department of Commerce and it's meant to, you know, go throughout our facilities. We have many, up to 100, up to and over 100, and look for opportunities for solar panel installation and battery installation. So it's just a way to make our buildings a little more efficient, give us a little more security as far as resilience in case of power outages. And ultimately, it will reduce our costs and our impacts on the electrical grid. So many, many good things associated with this. Well, I'll share more with you as this moves through the process. Next slide. So the creative district, I just, I just want to thank everybody who's really been heavily involved in the arts. That's together has gotten us to this point where we are, we are now at this, this launchpad. And so as you can see, this is a letter that is now being reviewed by the Washington State Art District, State of Washington's Art Creative District Review Committee. And so what this, there's a lot of good things that come from this. But I do want to point out that individual efforts from arts commissioners, those who have been champions for the arts in our community, it's a big deal. Counselor Chamberlain, who was instrumental in starting the city's first poet laureate program. I mean, those things, they add up, they matter. And so now we are, we are on the verge of being a creative art district. So I'll update you. You'll probably know as soon as I do, but I'll give it recognition during my report and join you in celebrating. Next slide, please. So a few of you probably saw this, this announcement, but I wanted to share with you. This, this is a symbol of our city's success and city's evolution. The cruise line that's been serving and calling us home in part, one of their ports, American Cruise Lines has now jumped their total of visits from 10 to 46. So this is nothing but from feedback from their customers, word of mouth, the experiences that they're, they're getting to enjoy here in the city. I'm proud of this effort. I'm proud of the work that we're all doing to make this a place to visit. So we are a destination. Wanted to share that with you. For those with, in your networking community, you know, your networks, just share, be ready for increased tourism in this season. Next slide, please. Warren Avenue Bridge, a big project. This has been many years in the making. My gosh, it's, I think, went down to Olympia with a, with a different team and secured a lot of funds with the help of staff, council members in the community. So we are close to getting a drawing, a final design ready. This is a big project coming up. I want everybody to kind of through your networks, begin to advertise and continue advertising. April 24th is an open house in person, right here at Norm Dick Center at five, starting at 5:00 PM. So let's get down here. Let's get a diverse group of perspectives and opinions. And so we're, we're close to the finish line on this important first, first part. Next slide, please. So this is exciting and we've all been waiting for this moment. And I know you've been, you've been waiting for this announcement. And so I quietly put together a small, a small working group of community leaders and you'll see them up there. I'm going to name them Martita May, Tony Ives, Pastor Richmond Johnson, Jill Stanton, Allison Roder, Lucretia Robertson, Jessica Guidry, and Dr. Lilian Robertson. And we had several meetings to come up with a plan and a strategy to, to go out into the community to help have the community become engaged and help us craft what a new diversity, equity, and inclusion director in the city will look like. And so this is just the beginning. The proposals are out, the requests for proposals are out. Again, I'll ask you to share through your networks that we want as many proposals to come into us as possible, so we can start the review process. So exciting that we're here. This will, this will be involved. It will be comprehensive and thorough. So we'll, the, the goal is to have a new DEI position filled in the city of Bremerton this year. So that's what we're working towards. Right, next slide, please. So I, I'm just gonna, just real quickly highlight that we have some exemplary Parks Department staff work going on in our city. And there's members of the community, the Lions Park walking community, who will actually come up and go into a little bit more detail, but this is just a, a letter of support that's been signed by many, just recognizing their efforts. And then Lynn will come up in a little bit to talk a little more. Next slide, please. The Energy Summit. So I hope Counselor Mockler, Counselor Coughlin, Council President, I appreciate you taking the time to come in person for anybody else. If you watched it on BCAT, I appreciate that. If you haven't yet, please do so. This is important. It's an important discussion. You know, we are, we are in a transitional time in, in our history where we are rapidly moving away from fossil fuels. This is through state and federal regulations and legislation. At the same time, we are also, we will see a significant growth in Bremerton and Kitsap County's population. The goal is to reduce fuels from our, the portfolios that produce carbon emissions like coal, gas, and gas. The replacements, as identified now, are wind and solar, which as of today are not predictable. So all of these things in mind were brought up and these topics were brought up and many, many more during the discussion that we had last week, the Energy Summit. And so this is not meant to be, you know, an alarming, or I'm not meaning to alarm you or the public because we're ahead of the game. In fact, as far as I know, this is the first summit convened by and for elected officials and for the public to view that Puget Sound Energy at very least has heard of. So that means we will become informed together. The reason I'm asking you to, to watch this, one of the showings that are up there or to go to the YouTube channel is we are opening, open for feedback. We, we need as much feedback as possible to help shape the next Energy Summit meeting. So we all, we all want a reliable grid that doesn't falter when peak demands hit. We need that grid there and ready for all of the things that we do enjoy in our lives. And at the same time, we need that grid to be part of a clean future, a clean energy future. So we can get there. We can, we can do it and we will have a role in the city of Bremerton. I was honored to, to lead this in partnership with Kitsap Transit. I'll continue to do so. And so more to come on that. And just before I turn this over, there was a nice letter that I think, I hope you got to see today. It was an appreciative water utility customer who, who I, you know, was alerting us to a very, you know, a bad situation that could have been worse. It actually turned out quite well because we had a professional alert utility billing specialist who noticed a spike in, in usage, water usage. It was a, it was a spike. It was, it was a 24-hour continual flow and it was way beyond what was normal for that house. So some of you on the council, remember the FlexNet investment we made. It was a technology investment in 2019. And what that allows us to do is exactly what you see right now. It's real-time monitoring, real-time data that can be analyzed and looked at. And when you have combined technology advancement with, with alert professionalism, then you get a good situation. So you saw the letter. I was, I was proud when I saw that. There's a lot that goes into this, but I wanted, Council wanted to let you know that the, the role that you get to play as far as approving these investments in technology, it's really important. So I appreciate that and appreciate our staff for continually looking for those opportunities for us to come to you and, and ask for that financial investment. So thank you and appreciate the time.
Thank you much for Mayor Wheeler and I really appreciate all the in-depth updates and it's just great to see so much progress on our shared goals for the cities. Thank you. All right, next up, we have the consent agenda.
Thank you, President Coughlin. For approval on the consent agenda are the following items. A, claims and check register, check numbers 402206 through 402442, and electronic fund transfers V37091 through V37221, and the grand total amount of $3,832,951.29. Two, regular payroll for pay period ending January 15th, 2023, and the amount of $1,087,267.98. Three, regular payroll for pay period ending March 15th, 2023, and the amount of $1,065,136.84. Four, retiree payroll for pay period ending March 31st, 2023, and the amount of $51,122.13. B, minutes of meeting March 15th, 2023. C, minutes of study session March 22nd, 2023. D, amendment number one to the agreement with the Department of Ecology for the 2021-2023 biennial Stormwater Capacity Grant. E, confirm appointment of Charles Bates to the Civil Service Commission. F, ordinance number 5470, amending chapter 2.50 of the Bremerton Municipal Code relating to the Fair Labor Standards Act and the Washington State Minimum Wage Non-Exempt Employees. This concludes the reading of the consent agenda.
Thank you. I wanted to note real quickly that for item 4B, the minutes of the previous meeting, March 15th, was amended just prior to the meeting to include a public speaker that was inadvertently omitted. So just want to make sure that was aware. That said, does any member of the public wish to comment on any one of these items? We'll check to make sure there's nobody online. All right, seeing none, we'll go to the council for a motion. Anybody? Councilmember Mockler.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second, and second by Councilmember Goodnow. I call for the question.
Councilmember Chamberlain?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Dennehy?
Yes.
Goodnow?
Yes.
Mockler?
Yes.
Younger?
Yes.
Coughlin?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda, we have public recognition.
Perfect. As noted on the agenda, public recognition provides an opportunity for attendees to address the council on any city-related item that's not already listed on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to speak, please either line up at the podium in the room or participating by Zoom, raise your hand and wait to be recognized. We just asked that you state your name for use in the meeting minutes. If you live or work in Bremerton and limit your comments to three minutes or less, and I'll be using a timer system so everyone is treated equally. With that, I open up public recognition. Please go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I am Erin Hale, the Executive Director of the Downtown Bremerton Association, with a few quick updates about what's going on. Last week, I was in Boston for the Main Street America Conference where Main Street Edies, board members, and civic leaders converge for deep dives into the resources-wise problem-solving and solutions at Main Street. Although I'm still absorbing the fire hose I was fed, I am deeply inspired and committed to building bridges between all of the incredible organizations we're fortunate to have within our work, our community. Main Street is about creating welcoming retail, not just for the naval community, but for the residents who live here. Main Street is about creating partnerships with building owners incentivized to fix up dilapidated buildings. Main Street is about maximizing existing entrepreneurial incubator opportunities and making the path to business ownership easier. I'm thrilled by the Main Street connections I've made throughout Washington and across the country. My favorite aspect about this community is the ethos of R and D, ripoff, and duplicate. I have every planned event and document at my disposal, and I need you to know that this entire community is cheering us on, eager to help us become a Main Street. And I also want to let you know that Revitalize Washington, the annual statewide conference, is going to be held in Vancouver, October 4th through the 6th. And I want to encourage all of you to join, join me and civic leaders, registration is very discounted. So I look forward to showing more, but I want to take this opportunity to also share that the DBA is establishing an annual award to recognize business leaders who've demonstrated a deep commitment to their community. It goes without saying that this award will bear the name of the ultimate standard of this ethos, Laura Knibb. Here's hoping she's not hearing this right now, and I can trust everyone in this room to keep the secret under your hat. But on Earth Day every year, we will award the Laura Knibb, the Community, four Community Award. And the first one will be awarded to the very person for whom this award was named. I'd like to welcome you to please join the, join the community and congratulating Laura on her retirement this Friday. Her shop will be open from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. She deserves so much love and appreciation for demonstrating what it means to commit to community. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hale. And I know we appreciate your hard work on achieving a city's longstanding goal of progress towards getting that Main Street certification. And I know I'll miss Ms. Knibb as well. Thank you. Next up, public recognition. Ms. Rabelowski.
Hi, Jane Rabelowski, resident of Bremerton. I was a little concerned that, well, not concerned that something happened. It says something isn't happening. In November of 2020, council approved over $900,000 for the funding of Haddon Park Master Plan and renovation is supposed to be completed in 2022. I understand that there was a pandemic at the time. In November of 2021, council approved a budget that included funding for Haddon Park improvements to be completed in 2023. In May of 2022, Parametrics was contracted with the city for Haddon Park improvements. And the, that project, the 100% plans were supposed to be completed, or at least 90%, by November of 2022 with construction in June of 20... Did I get that right? Anyway, now it seems like other parks have jumped ahead of it. I don't know how many of you have been to Haddon Park. It's nothing. It's a bumpy field with a crummy little walkway and people have to get in their cars because it's not even safe to ride a bike for them to go to Kiwanis Park, which is a beautiful park, and I'd love to see it upgraded, but I don't want you to forget that Haddon Park is really needed. There is no playfield in the area at all or decent parking. You can't even play basketball on it because the pavement's so bad. They had to take out the equipment because it was unsafe. So please don't let Haddon Park get pushed farther behind. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rabelowski. I encourage you to tag up with Parks Director Alavado maybe at the end of this meeting and walk on that. Thank you. Anybody else for public recognition? We got two online. Let's go online to Mary Lou Long. Miss Long, go ahead if you can hear us. See, we still can't hear you, Miss Long, if you're speaking. Let's give another few seconds.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, Mary Lou Long, and I'm a longtime resident of Bremerton. I'm here once again to salute the flag and pledge allegiance to it. So I will begin with that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am here tonight, and I wasn't quite sure of what the mayor was going to talk about, but I'd like to bring up that last subject that he talked about, the water equipment that could be put in to notify the water department immediately if there's excessive use. I am a customer of the water and I had a recent incident where we were unaware that our water was running. And it was running at the base of our hill of our house or our property. The water never really reached our yard, our house, or anything. And finally, it was a point where it gushed out and a neighbor called the water department and told them that there was water gushing out, so they came and shut it off. But it was a constant leak for probably three or, no, was probably a full month. And the bill was adjusted down from $2,000 to about $1,400. Not only do you need some sort of an alarm system to send the department out to check on water usage that's unusual, you also need to maybe look at the provision that people or customers can have their bills adjusted back to their normal bill rather than having to pay an exorbitant amount. Say if you were on vacation, you were gone for a month. And I happen to be on vacation now. Fortunately, my water situation is all right, but if I had been gone for a month and this was going on, I didn't know about it, or any citizen didn't know about it, it would run up an enormous bill and then as a property owner, we're responsible for the water that comes out of the meter, but doesn't ever reach us. And I think that the council should revisit the water department's billing and, and see if they can adjust that so that it's not such an oppressive bill when it's not anybody's fault except a failure of a pipe and the fact that we didn't see it or understand how much water was going through that leak for a whole month until it burst completely. So I'd like the council to look into that. Since I have a couple more minutes, I'd like to, 10 seconds?
Okay.
Without memory, a person is unknowable to himself and anyone else. Remove a nation's history and the nation becomes disconnected and drifts away like an enormous balloon that escapes from the moon this Thanksgiving day.
Appreciate it. I know the mayor heard your comments about the water billing and I'm sure can reach out to the Water Utility Department and look into that. So thank you so much. Next up, public recognition. I believe there's one more online. Yes, Kristy Lyson, please go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Kristy Lyson. I am a resident in District 3. And I want to talk again about toilet facilities for our unhoused neighbors on MLK Way in that general area of downtown. We have, myself and other community members have been coming to council meetings for almost a year now to talk about this issue. And we are, we were very pleased to have the council set aside $10,000 to, you know, put in some sort of either porta potty facilities or money towards, you know, at least exploring and getting the ball rolling on creating permanent toilet facilities in the downtown core area for, for our unhoused neighbors to use for sanitation reasons and human, basic human dignity. And it seems to have just stalled out. We, you know, it's now, that was November when the budget was approved with the $10,000 and we're now in April. And I don't think other than, and I, we appreciate Jeff met with us, G2 Housing Group a couple weeks ago to talk about the, the plan and the issue, but it just, it just seems stalled. So I just want to let you know that we, I mean, we need to do something and I'm feeling very impatient and discouraged. And meanwhile, you know, the, now the severe weather shelter options in Bremerton are now not available. You know, the funding for shelters is declining. So the situation for our house, our unhoused neighbors is even worse than ever. I, so my alternative, while I'm, you know, continuing to pursue meeting with you and I invite all the council members that previously committed to working on this issue with us to, you know, if you get invited to a meeting with us, I'd appreciate it if you would come, so we can figure out a plan to move this, you know, this ball forward, if you will. But in the meantime, my plan is to do kind of a widespread informational kind of put information out into my unhoused neighbors' hands about the existing public facilities that are available to them to use for restrooms. And so the immediate things that are closest to them are Evergreen Park Toilet Facilities and the Norm Dick's Building. There is also a public building that is open and available to them to use for their toilet needs, at least during daytime hours. I had some other comments, but I'm out of time. So thank you for your time and consideration. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lyson. And I appreciate you bringing back up that topic. I gave a quick update at the last council meeting and not to spend too much time on it, but I know there has been some hard work by folks in the city examining the, the G2 proposal, which has a lot of complications to, to work through. And so I took the initiative to reach out and meet with you, and I haven't done that yet in the past week. So I promised to reach out and meet with G2 again, and let's keep brainstorming to find a way to spend that $10,000. So I promise I'll, I'll get back to you this week. So thank you for pressing the issue. All right. And next up for public comment, we'll go here to the podium.
My name is Lynn Hall. I'm a resident of East Bremerton. I live near Lions Park, actually in the condos with the big view, looking out with an expansive view of the park. And my husband and I are always amazed at the work that's being done in the park and the improvements, the trimming of trees and bushes and making it more feasible to be enjoyed by all the people that live in the neighborhood and those that even come from welfare. We have some people come in from there every day to, to use the park. Anyway, I, I am a walker of the park and my friends sitting here are also walkers. We walk almost daily and we get to know each other. We're friends and buddies. And we were commenting on what a great park we have. And we were trying to figure out how we can let the people know that do the work in our park, how much we appreciate what they do. And we know them personally because we're there every day. We say, hi, how are you doing? And they're friendly and cooperative. They listen to what suggestions that we have and are very, very much a good addition to the park. And the people suggested that we let you all know what great workers they are. And so we put, wrote up a little letter and I will read it to you. And we had people sign it and we were out there two days for two hours is all. And we got a lot of signatures. So had we had no rain and been able to be out there longer, we could have had a lot more. But this is the letter and it's, we sent a copy to the mayor and a copy to the Parks and Recreation Department, a copy to each of the two workers that we're here to honor tonight. And this is the letter. So I'll read it to you. It says, "We are residents who have noticed many improvements in the last few years at Lions Park. We are sending this letter to inform you how we value, how much we value these two individuals. Mike Kelly..." Did you stand? And, and Steve Munson? "These gentlemen should be recognized for their outstanding efforts in maintaining and proving the environment of the beautiful waterfront park. We've seen many public employees do their jobs, as I'm sure you do, and just the basics, but these guys..." But these guys, wow, and they are dedicated to that park. They stay there, they get the job done. It's always neat and organized." Even my husband, who sits in the window and watches him, he says, oh, my gosh, those guys work so hard out there. I can't believe it. Do they ever stop? And they do. They have a good time, too. And they're outstanding in their commitment to the roles to keep our park a favorite destination for so many people and different activities. As a result of their efforts, we have a clean, safe, and friendly space for our community. And
Very close on time. I hate to do that.
And I appreciate all that they do. Thank you.
Gosh, thanks. Round of applause again. Okay. Afterwards, yeah. Gosh, thank you so much for taking the time to get your community together to highlight our hard work and city volunteers. This city can't run without all the people doing such hard work. So with that said, let me just turn it over to the mayor, Parks Director Olivato, if you wish to respond as well.
We're citizens, too, so we're gonna, we're gonna use our three minutes here. And so, you know, they, we wanted to keep going with the, I know Lynn was, wanted to do a little bit more, but, you know, I don't know, Jeff, if you want to say a few words, but we're really proud of what those workers are doing.
I'm just surprised you're here. So I'm thankful and thanks for showing up. But no, you know, Mike and Steve are kind of our lead service specialist seniors, and they really take the, take the ball and run with it. There's not a job in the city that these guys can't do. They are dedicated to their location, but they also, and I've talked to them about several things, and they always divert the praise on to their teammates. So I think that's admirable when you, you know, you're, you know, kicking booty out there, but you give the praise to your teammates. And that's just a great culture, and I'm thankful that these guys are part of our team.
My thanks again to our hard city workers for going out there every day, keeping this, keeping this place running. And my thanks to you for, again, putting together the, going out of your way to highlight folks. We're, as it's great to see people, you know, often speak up on what's not right with the city, and that is fantastic because we need to know council administration so we can do better and fix what's not working. But it's really great to also get the positive feedback to know what is working well. So thank you for taking the time to do that. All right, and we'll see if there's anyone, yes.
Sorry to interrupt, this is not, can we do a picture with the, can we get a picture with these fantastic walkers from the most beautiful park in Bremerton that also happens to be?
I'll allow, we can do it after the meeting, but yes, let's do it right now.
Want to?
Yeah, okay.
So hi, hello there, Lyons Park walkers.
Do you want to come on up to the?
And taking a photo op and also our, our workers here? Mr. Kelly, Mr. Munson?
Yeah, let's get everybody up here real quick. Things on it, all right.
So you guys are gonna come stand?
There we go, yeah, we go here and then we're back.
Stand right here.
You got it.
Perfect.
Can you do me, too?
Takes a village.
Yeah. All right. Make sure you can see the camera.
That's okay.
Say trees.
Good job, you guys.
All right, we'll resume public recognition, and we'll go here to the podium in the room. And then I know there's still some more online.
Hey, good afternoon or good evening, depends on what time to get up. I want to say first thing, well, hello, my name's Dave Cooper. I am a local business owner here in Bremerton. Again, I'm homegrown, although I moved to Port Orchard when the gangs were taking over my neighborhood. So anyway, I'm still homegrown in Bremerton. I wanted to say also, long as we're doing all the kudos, I had a pothole issue, and they referred me, you know that there's a Bremerton app that you can put on your phone? Well, there is, and if you don't have it, I'd recommend it because it really does help. It made it very easy to report the issue that I had, and I took the picture and da-da-da, once I figured out how to navigate it a little bit, but it was all easy. So thank you. I'm up here tonight because I'm, I'm a little frustrated with, with the crime and homeless issue that's been going on in our city. And I know that a lot of towns are having that same issue. But I'm up here as John Q. Public to let you know that I represent a lot of people who are very frustrated. We're kind of tired of having vagrants or homeless move next to a business, doing all sorts of things that are not going to be talked about. But I think there ought to be some stiffer penalties or something to work on that. I'm, I was told that, you know, to have input and that there would be change, and I sure hope so. We did catch someone stealing again from our shop up on Wheaton Way. And so that was, that was a plus, so the cameras actually worked that time, and the police were awesome. And the only thing is, they were out by that afternoon. And I know that I've been told that they can't do anything because it's a state thing. I, I have, I have a hard time a little bit understanding when you have someone who's broke the law, and they can just get out because the state says they can. And I'm just saying that there ought to be some more solutions to this. And so that's, that's what I really want to put out is, I'm looking for solutions and then some action that's going to be taking place from, from my council and from my mayor. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Cooper, and we'll definitely hear you, and we'll, we'll take it under advisement. Thank you. All right, next up, we'll go again to the podium in the room.
Hi, Joe Walter. I live in Bremerton. And I also really love that the Lyons Park walkers came tonight, and it just kind of inspired me to try and be more positive with what it is I come to share with you all. Because I felt it, it felt good, like community, and like I want to be with those walkers, meeting those workers in my community. It was really nice. What I had in mind to talk about also was the, the plan for a levy to be on the ballot that you talked about in the last study session. I am concerned that it would be one levy for both police and fire. I think that Councilmember Dennehy was the one who mentioned, I don't know, the word "defunding" was tossed around, and that's a very provocative word.
Oh, I think we lost the mic. We'll pause the, pause the timer there.
It's a provocative word, and I think when the word comes up, it makes one think that you're opposed to policing. I think that we are in a time in our country where we're experiencing a reckoning about racism and policing and racial justice issues are linked. And I think people have feelings about their services in their community, both police and fire. And they, I think we deserve an option to decide if we want to vote for one, both, or none. Yeah, the other, I saw something, Christie brought it, Christie who spoke a minute before, that there is to be a consultant to be hired to help us figure out how to hire the diversity, equity, and inclusion officer. I'm concerned about, just on the, I don't know all the details, but on the face of it, it seems kind of crazy that we're going to spend money to hire somebody to tell us how to hire somebody. And we have folks who have already been in service to this community on RIAAC and who have called on other community leaders for advice about what we need to do. And I haven't heard how those folks are being used as resources for us. And my time's running out, so thank you.
Thank you so much. And as far as the levy goes, I did just want to mention that will, that should be on the next council study session for continued discussion and then general for action. And so absolutely feel free to write in more on that, anybody, or at the general session, there'll be opportunity for live public input. So thanks for the input there. And then for the consultant contract, it's specifically to help craft the rules and responsibilities of that position that council will ultimately pass and how that position integrates into the city structure. So I do want to make clear that that is, though the RFP is out, as the mayor announced, that would come before council any proposal, and so there would be plenty of opportunity for public input. And absolutely, I know we want to hear from every folk that's been involved in this process over the past several years and get all that public input. So there will absolutely be the opportunity to hear from every voice, not just, not just one consultant. So appreciate the comment. And now we'll go back to online to Jim Klein. Jim, if you can hear us, go ahead and unmute.
I just did unmute it. Okay.
Perfect.
So I'm the interim vice president of the Charleston Business Association, and I just want to tell you some great news in the next three minutes. And that's kind of the story of Tick and Talk and Tidy Up. The Tick is about the historic clock in, down on Calo, and the guy that owns Smitty's Tattoo Parlor has taken that on as a project for some time. He winds the clock, maintains the clock, and he's done a great job. And I don't remember exactly how many years he's been doing it, but that's an example of the spirit of the merchants and the people who live and work down on Calo. The next thing is Talk, and the Talk is, I'm sorry, Tick. And Tick is those little white lines that are painted on the streets to indicate where you should park. And the, we've been working on that with the city for the last year. And exciting news, this morning, they were down there on Calo, and they repainted between Sixth and Ninth Street. So that's another fresh new look for Calo. And the Tidy Up is, we've come up with a project involving merchants, and this is an example of the great news. I was down there on Tuesday sweeping up. I got Gyro Star, and the guy came out and he says, oh, what are you doing? And I said, well, I'm part of the Charleston group. And he says, well, you don't need to clean this because I've got somebody coming this afternoon to sweep it up. And they did. Along with another example is Melinda at Cafe Corvo. And I know that Councilman Goodnow has a reserved seat down there because they offer great coffee, and it's a great place to meet. So she actually had somebody come in and wash her windows across the street. Discordia Games is working on the front of the building. Just on and on that there is lots of new things happening. Trash is being picked up. The streets look really clean. We're anxious to partner with the city when you get the new street sweeper that Michael Goodnow will work on putting something together and will have hosting a ribbon cutting ceremony for the new street sweeper. One other last point is, First Friday, First Friday in March was absolutely fabulous. I know the mayor and lots of other customers were down there on Calo and Perdita, who put up a show of artwork, is at McGavin's Bakery. They did a great job. So that's kind of what's happening, and the best is yet to come. And we're taking action right now to make that happen with the city. We love Calo.
No, that is, that is great news. I know continuing to revitalize is a big council goal, the Charleston area. So it's so great to see community coming together to make that happen. And mayor, if you need more staff to do some heavy lifting at some point, I might, you know, it sounds like somebody's available, so.
He's on his coffee break.
All right. Anyone else for public recognition? All right, seeing none in the room and none online, we'll close public recognition and go to general business.
General business item 6A, goods and services agreement for purchase of playground equipment and servicing from Landscape Structures, Inc. for the Kiwanis Park Playground Accessibility Upgrade Project. Presenter is Parks and Recreation Director Jeff Olivato.
Welcome, Director Olivato. Take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, council. This project is to replace the existing outdated wooden playground at Kiwanis Park and also to improve the fall surfacing material. This will improve the durability and accessibility of the playground at Kiwanis Park. This upgrade is made possible through a generous donation from the Kiwanis Club of Bremerton and an additional Department of Commerce grant that was awarded and approved by council in November of 2022. The equipment surface pricing has been competitively solicited and publicly bid through the Sourcewell Contracting First Act Agreement. Total project cost is $307,000, and that includes insulation, freight, and sales tax. I've added to the packet since the, the study session information about the infill material that Councilmen Younger requested. We're happy to say that the infill material used in this application is a rounded quartz material that's coated with an acrylic layer infused with microband technology, and it doesn't have any of the symptoms of the crumb rubber that are typically found, inclusive of heavy lead and metals that are leached out of that rubber, crumb rubber. So we're happy that that's the type of infill that we're using. Also, we're happy to answer any questions. Sorry.
Excellent. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? It looks like we have some in the room here. Come on up. Please state your name and take it away.
Good evening, council members. My name is Allison Roder, and I'm current president of the Bremerton Kiwanis Club. And I have several members and past presidents with me as well. The Kiwanis Club of Bremerton has been supporting the Kiwanis Club here, excuse me, the Kiwanis Park since 1973. And in celebration of our 100-year anniversary as a club, we have supported the park and the purchase of the equipment in part, $130,000. So we're here tonight to make that official presentation, and, and thank you for the partnership and the support. Our kids need great places to play, so.
All right, thank you so much. Yeah. We want to take another, we can do another photo op. Yeah, we'll take, we'll take a pause.
Use that next time.
We'll just give it a few seconds here. All right, thank you all so much. Is there anybody else for public comment on this item? And just checking, no one online? All right, there's one in the room. Yes, please come to the podium.
As a resident of District Six, I do want to, I am curious about what Haddon Park and the progress of that, if you don't mind updating us.
Sure, Director Olivato, if you want to take the initiative. Sure, Director Elevato, if you want to take the initiative.
So Haddon Park is underway. We are getting near our ability to go out to bid on that project and hope to by later part of this year.
Great, thank you. Just checking again, any public comment on this item? All right. Seeing and hearing none, I'll go to the council for a motion. Councilmember Chamberlain.
Move to approve the goods and services agreement for the purchase and installation of playground equipment and fall surfacing from Landscape Structures, Inc. in the amount of $300,667.90 sales tax included and amend the park's capital budget in the same amount and authorize the mayor to finalize and execute the agreement with substantially the same terms and conditions as presented.
Second the motion.
All right, we have a motion in a second. We're open for discussion. Councilmember Chamberlain, would you like the floor?
So yeah, this is pretty exciting that we have the Kiwanis Club, and this is to celebrate their anniversary, 100 years. Is that right? Did I hear that right? Okay. That is, you know, and anytime an organization wants to improve a common space in our community, it's a good thing. So I, I, I'm very appreciative of the Kiwanis Club for that. I jokingly told a colleague that maybe we should rename Haddon Park after a service club in our community. And maybe we could get some more work done there. But I'm just wondering, and just for clarity, should we does the process of this bid in, in any way interfere with the ability of the Parks Department to put bids out for other parks in rotation?
Absolutely not.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and close my questions and defer to Councilmember Mockler next.
All right, Councilmember Mockler.
Thank you. I am going to take three minutes and only three minutes to talk about Haddon Park. And then I will come right back to this.
As long as it's
It's
germane to this contract and the influence upon it. That's okay. As long as, as long as it ties back.
I think that Director Elevato is mistaken when he states that implementing this contract will not impact Haddon Park at all. The contract that we approved, that council approved in July 2022 with parametrics so that there would be 60% drawings last September, 90% drawings last November. And that final drawings would be complete on December 30th of last year. You told us on the 22nd of March that you did not even have 60% drawings. It seems to me that if you were not working on Kiwanis, that you might have time to pursue parametrics and keep them closer to their contract. I understand that you have said that you had a difficulty with landfill which has to be investigated as archaeology. But that contract was modified from $4,000 to $8,000 indicating that it is not a very deep scope. Can you tell us at a time when you have had, not when you have lacked 60% drawings in April and been able to complete the work within that calendar year?
So just to keep it germane, can I answer the question is, has this contract with, with Kiwanis influenced Haddon? Is that correct to your question?
Energy, the Parks Department is finite. It's, it's resources and it's, it's human power is finite. If, if the focus is on Kiwanis or on pickleball courts, then that is really great. And if anybody thinks I'm saying this is bad, Kiwanis should not get improvements. Totally, they should.
Just wanted to define this.
But it's
Point of, point of order, point of order, Council President. Finite resources could be an argument to bring up any issue that is germane to city business. If you're saying you're working on one thing and not another. So I'd like to point of order and say this should be germane to the Kiwanis.
No, point, point taken. So I think the question, to keep it germane, is has the work on this contract with Kiwanis influenced the timeline of Haddon Park?
No.
Right.
If you'd like me to elaborate.
I very, I personally would like that, but I, I turn to council. Is it okay with you if elaboration happens?
Yes, so Director, please go ahead.
We are working on no fewer than five projects right now. They include Kitsap Lake, Pendergast, Alliance Park Project, the Glen Jarston Aquatic Center Masonry and Roof Repair and Haddon Park. We're able to do that because of our, our staff person that works very hard on those projects. The delay in Haddon Park is not a delay. It's actually, we've increased the timeline on that. Haddon was technically going to happen next year. But because of the delays of Kitsap Lake, I'm sorry if you want to shake your head about that. That's what, I'm trying to tell you the truth.
Yep. Let's just keep it to the facts and yes.
Kitsap Lake Park came into some permitting delays. That caused us to move Haddon Park forward. We've been working on Haddon ever since. We did have significant delays related to archaeological survey requirements. We're working closely with our granting agencies to make sure we satisfy all those requirements. We just got a letter today that the Department of Historic Preservation has reviewed our plan. And they required additional mediation to this, this so-called dump. So we are working very closely and very quickly as we can with RCO. And I can honestly tell you, there's no impact on Haddon relative to these other projects. I hope that answers your question.
A question that I'm sure all of council will consider is germane is can you tell us what is the addition of when we looked at this in the budget?
I apologize. I can't see your face and I'm having difficulty hearing you.
Let me try to speak more loudly.
Thank you.
When we approved this contract in November 2022 on 11/16, it did not include this extra, what is it, 16,000 that you're asking for now. So I was wondering what is the, the reason for the cost increase? Better?
Thank you. The 130,000 that was donated by the Kiwanis Club was added to a $160,000 Department of Commerce grant. We went out and solicited bids from at least four, I think five, excuse me, five different vendors. And the bids came in at $307,000. The additional fees are to make that complete project. So the funding didn't match the total amount of the, the cost of this project. So we're looking for additional funds through our Parks Capital Improvement Fund to the tune of 17,000. And we're hopeful that council will consider that a good investment when we got nearly over 290,000 in donations.
I have no further questions for you, Director Elevato.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member wish to speak on this item? All right. Seeing here none, I will call.
I'm, I'm online, Jeff.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Councilmember Dennehy. Couldn't see your hand. Yes, please go ahead.
No problem. Thanks. Since this is my district, I just want to again thank Kiwanis so much for this generous donation. And apologize on behalf of one of my fellow council members for refusing to take a photo. Felt that was very classless and
Councilmember Dennehy, please refrain from personal
Thank you so much, Director Elevato. We really appreciate the work that you do. And again, apologies for the derision. Thank you, Kwan.
Any other council member to speak on this item? Okay, I'll close, I'll close out here. Let's try in the future to keep personal remarks out of, out of our comments. But going back to this item, you know, I, I appreciate the discussion on, you know, does accepting this influence the rest of the city? It's a, it's a, it's a good point. However, the Parks Recreation Open Space Plan has, has Haddon in it. Sounds like it's on track. That this isn't significantly delaying it from what I'm hearing. And I just want to say I'm really grateful to the Kiwanis Club for their donation, for getting the matching grant from the Department of Commerce. For the, for the administration to be able to get that money. At the end of the day, we're getting a new playground and park in the city for what is a couple thousand dollars of, of actual city funds and the, and the rest is coming from external sources. So to me, this is a, this is a great deal. And going back to the actual equipment itself that's going to be installed, I said in study session, it's very similar to the Evergreen Rotary Park, which I frequent a lot with my two-year-old. And it's a wonderful combination of equipment that can be used for all ages, from toddler to older kids. And I can just tell you how many other parents I talked to, especially with toddlers that could use that equipment. So I really appreciate this particular playground equipment that's going to be going in at Kiwanis for enjoyment by everyone in the city. So with that, I'm just going to go ahead and call for the question.
Council President.
Mayor, I'm going to call, I'm going to call for the question.
Council President, we will address this, this type of questioning. We're going to address this at some
Mayor, I called for the question. We can discuss this.
Okay, we will address this.
We're going to discuss this out of this meeting. I called for the question.
Councilmember Fry.
Yes.
Dennehy?
Yes.
Goodnow?
Yes.
Mockler?
Abstain.
Younger?
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Coughlin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Six yeses, one abstention. This concludes general business.
All right. Next up, we have item seven, council reports. Since this is the first council meeting of the month, we'll start with District One, Council Vice President Jennifer Chamberlain.
Thank you, President Coughlin. I have a slide. I really do this time. So I'm, I'm really bummed that our Lions Park walkers are gone because they don't get to see that right across the street. We're going to have a little work party over at Stephenson Canyon on Saturday, April 15th from 10:00 AM to noon. So if anybody's interested in joining, we're going to meet at the Birch Street Trailhead. That's where the greenhouses are, the city greenhouses. And do a little, do a little pickup, maybe explore some places where we can start pulling up some English ivy, which is super invasive in that park right now. And it needs some TLC from volunteers in the community. As you've heard, the Parks Department is very busy with, with all of the projects going on. And they really rely big time on volunteer support for our parks. And that is, that's all. I, I, I feel the need to address what just happened. And you know, I don't know that I necessarily find any of the questioning that Councilmember Mockler said inappropriate. And I appreciate
Chamberlain, I'm just going to request that in line with the rest of the meeting, we don't refer to other council members.
Well, what I will say is that in past meetings, what I've noticed in a different council makeup is that there was another member that was not rebuked near as much as another council member on this, in this term. So, you know, I just would like us to just chill out a little bit. Let people have their questions and be respectful to each other. Thank you for your questions. And I appreciate all of you.
Well, thank you. Next up, we have District Two, Councilmember Denise Fry.
Yes, I too have a presentation. Go ahead and go to that first one. You know, Councilmember Younger saw this earlier and he said, Denise, I can't wait and to hear what you're going to talk about with this slide. Well, you know, I just came back from a visit to North Carolina. And whenever I travel, I like to see what the city council's doing. I thought this was going to be really well, you know what? Maybe it is really timely. Because I was going to say something like, aren't we glad that none of this happens here? So anyway, you know what? There are no coincidences. Let's move on to the next slide. It is spring, so there's lots of work parties. I am proud to have Josh Farley as a constituent in District Two. And he and Kevin Coste, who by the way, need to connect with, yeah, around Stephenson. And then that's Lance McCoy with Bremerton Schools. And they were out at the Madrona Trails Work Party in last month. I think we've got West Sound Cycling Club involved and their two kids came. It was a great day. We're going to have another one. It went so well. Go to the next slide if you would. Next up is Sheridan Park Cleanup. We're going to meet at the Community Center at 10 o'clock on Saturday, April 29th. Josh will be there. I'll be there. Come on, all the cool kids are going to be there. And it should be a lot of fun and, and we'll be able to see a lot of impact. Next up. I just got to end with this and say that, you know, the Perry Street Mall is in my district. And it's kind of juts out there into the county, but it's still Bremerton. And I don't, many of you know, I don't happen to drink alcohol. And one of my pet peeves is going to places, sometimes like the Admiral Theater, who don't make a specific point of trying to serve those of us who don't drink alcohol. And so Chaos Bay Bruin in my district serves a lot of different kinds of mocktails. It's a really family oriented place. I always like to give a shout out. Didn't mean to throw Admiral Theater under the bus, but Brian Johnson, if you happen to be listening, get those mocktails ready on the menu and I'll stop making that complaint. So thank you. That's it.
Excellent. Next up, we have District Four, Councilmember Quinn Dennehy.
Thank you, Council President. You know, I've said this before in study sessions, but I just wanted to make a public announcement about it. Due to the fact that I most likely will not be living in District Four during some point of the next term, I am not going to be seeking reelection. And so I'm just calling for those folks who do want to possibly run for the position. I know at least of a handful of people that are interested to, to look at the filing date. I believe it's in May. Talk to the, I, I believe it would be the, the county and, and city auditors who, and assessors that, that kind of run the process. But, you know, mainly what I, what I'm offering is a coffee date with anybody that's interested to kind of get my take on it. I hope to endorse during election season. So if you're interested and you live in between Naval and Warren and the shipyard and Olympic College, and you would like to sit on city council, please stir your head in. I would love to talk about it. It has a beautiful, beautiful park.
All right. Next up, we have District Five, Councilmember Michael Goodnow.
All right. Just a couple of things I want to mention. No, no slides. Councilmember Dennehy's district ends at Hewitt. So watch the crawl there. Forest Ridge Park also does, looking for service clubs. So we would love to have any community support for that park as well. The third Saturday morning, park cleanups have resumed. I haven't seen anything scheduled, but they have a Facebook page and forestridgepark@gmail.com. Nine o'clock on the third Saturdays and they meet on the sort of south end of the park at the, what I would say the main, main entrance. And it's, it's, it's a great time, great people. And you get to spend some time, was it like a forest bathing? Is that? That's, yeah, yeah. So it's, it's lovely. I've had a great time every time I've gone. And then I will say that I'll invite you to come to the Roxy anytime where we have a new set of zero proof cocktails, including a really fantastic phony Negroni. And we also have some other cocktails and zero proof beers as well. So I think that is all I have. You know, I'll just kind of echo what Jim Klein said earlier. It's just great stuff happening down on Calo right now. And in, in lots of places, I see Erin shaking her head to that. And she's doing a great job with the Downtown Association. So, you know, thanks for looking up. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, we have District Six, Councilmember Anna Mockler.
Thanks. So I've only got like one slide. This is the cover. I have two slides. Yes. So this is the, I think the slide two, please. There we go. This is the, the ongoing every second Monday, four to six town hall. I think this is going to be the end of the ones with themes and we'll just go with, you know, I'll be there. If you have something you want to talk about, come on by. This month, to celebrate National Poetry Month, our own poet laureate, Tia Hudson, will be typewriting poems on any topic in 10 This month, to celebrate National Poetry Month, our own poet laureate, Tia Hudson, will be typewriting poems on any topic in ten minutes and reading new work. This is really just mutual aid in poetry. I was really touched by listening to the women speak about walking at Lions Park. And then additional people came and were really glorying in, in Kiwanis Park. And I thought I would just sit down and hide behind my screen for a while because I think women who cry in public are just, you know, it's just beyond the pale. So I thought I'd just like stay here and, you know, not be publicly weeping. Because I would really like to have that at our park, Haddon Park. I would like to have the possibility of people walking, forming friendships. And yes, I was thinking about naming it after the Seahawks as a possible way to get donations. That's really it. Something I omitted to say to Director Elavato is that he chastised me on the twenty-second for not having done my homework.
Mockler, in line with the meeting, Roberts rules, please refrain from making personal remarks.
He was quite right. He was quite right. I had not done my homework, and I wanted to thank him for making me a better scholar. Is that acceptable?
It's okay.
Yeah, that's where I'm going with that. To close out, just for National Poetry Month, I can't find a poem that I like online, so I'm just going to give you a really short one by the Japanese poet Shingichi Takahashi, and I really hope that part of it comes true. "It's a fine day, and I'm talking to the sun. There isn't only one of you, I say. There are thousands, and the stars. To be is to be numberless, and yet, a magnificent idylight in your heat. Dust spec, I adore you." Thank you.
Next up, we have District Six, Councilmember Eric Younger.
All right, so seeing Josh Farley's picture there kind of made me go down memory lane. I was thinking about all the past reporters that we used to have sit right over there at that little lower part of the the podium here. So we had Josh Farley, and then we had Eric Williams. Anyone remember Eric Williams? There we go. Jane knows. Jane's been around as long as I have, haven't you, Jane? Maybe longer. And then before that was Steve Gardner. And we had all kinds of great reporter coverage and kind of lamenting, I'm going to end my, my talk on a positive note, but just kind of the demise of the local paper because I, I wish Josh the best. I understand he's got a great position where he's at. But I also understand the economics of local newspapers, and I saw that, I think the legislature is trying to do some VNO tax relief for newspapers, but I don't think it's going to be helpful. I mean, the local newspapers, it's kind of, when I used to ride that ferry boat, when I first got on there, I'd always get my newspaper, Kitsap Sun, Tacoma News Tribune, there'd be all kinds of ferry riders with me that would all street the paper. I don't see people reading newspapers anymore. I know it's on digital and stuff, but it's, it's, it's a sign of the times. It is what it is. So I would like to express my appreciation. I have fond memories of Haddon Park, actually. My wife was part of the Moms Club. Now I'm going back twenty years again. And would go around the strollers around Haddon Park and Evergreen Park and Lions Park, and they'd meet in different parks. And I just want to express my appreciation to Jeff Elavato on the Parks Department for all the great work they do with parks. Again, I've been around a while, and this man does a great job, his whole Parks Department, with leveraging grant dollars and community fundraising to get so much bang for our buck. And I understand the disappointment some people might have on parks. I mean, I've got Lower Nad Park, I think. But it, there's a plan. There's a Parks Commission, and there's commissioners that represent all parts of the city of Birmerton on there. Jeff has made a point of trying to make sure someone in each district is on that commission. So I just want to say thank you, Mr. Elavato. I think the Parks Department's doing a bang-up job, and I'm very appreciative of our Parks Department. And that's all I have for my report.
All right, thank you. And last up is me for District Three, and I've got a number of slides, just because I feel like there's so much going on right now. I don't know if it's spring leading into summer, but there's a lot of events. I feel like we just awakened from winter. First slide, I wanted to make sure folks saw this announcement from KCR. There's rental assistance available. Applications are open April third, April fourteenth. Looks like you can apply online or, or go in person. I know rental assistance is such a vital need in our community. So please spread the word if you know anybody who might be in need of rental assistance or eviction prevention. Next slide. I would announce there's an Easter egg hunt in Manette. I know there's a couple going around the, going on in the city. But ten thirty this Saturday, put on by the Manette Neighborhood Coalition and Manette Business Association at the Manette Playfield and Park. So I'll be there with my son. And I think more than last year, hopefully he'll, he'll get the concept this year. We'll see. Our next slide. And I was so glad to see the Birmerton Communities Farmers Market was announced opening day of May eleventh, still in Evergreen Rotary Park. So I know they, they had a lot of board turnover, and a few members left on the start of this year. So they called a community meeting, and it was so great to see Mayor and Director Elavato were there, and myself, and then just a packed room full of people willing to step up to, to make this happen. So I know they rapidly filled the board positions, were able to keep it at Evergreen Rotary. And so that is just so fantastic to see the community gather to keep this going because I know it's such a vital, not only for the farmers market part, but just the community gathering. So great to see. Next slide. Mayor, Mayor already got this one, cruise ship dockings, but I know especially for the downtown area, so many of our local small businesses are, are really excited. This is such a, such a boon from, I believe, last year had, had three, four, five, something around there, a number of dockings. So this is just an exponential increase, and my thanks to the many leaders in the community who are working to help make sure that this provides an economic boom to our small businesses and keeps revitalizing not only downtown but the rest of the city. And next slide. And then, yes, announced two weeks ago, this is now tomorrow, yeah. This was just for Fourth and Fifth Street. From Park to Washington is the main focus, but myself and Councilmember Goodnow just wearing our hats as local, local business folk are working on this, along with Holly Moss, also co-owner of Spark Commons. So if folks are interested, meet up at five o'clock tomorrow at the Roxy. The weather's not looking great, but it's happening regardless. And another big shout out to the Kitsap County Adopt a Spot Program, who will, when you, when you go through their program and do all the paperwork, they'll drop off trash pickers and trash bags and safety vests and provide some great training. So really, really neat program. And I think one more slide, oh, a couple more. I had this in here. I was going to give a shout out to park staff. I felt like a creeper for taking it, but this gentleman was working, working so hard on getting the fountain going up at Evergreen Rotary Park. So it's working, working, working great now that we're out of winter. He's been using it almost every day. So just thanks so much for, for parks. As soon as the weather snapped from cold to hot, was right on it and getting it working. And last slide is, speaking of fountains, I said it before, but I got to give another kudos to getting this fountain installed over on the other side of the bridge. Again, that's nice, really partnership between community involvement, Mayor, Public Works Parks, and just getting this, getting this done, something the community's needed for a long time. So with that, I'll close out my council report and just say I appreciate everybody in this room. And I know sometimes these meetings can get, can get heated, but there's very good questions to ask, good responses to be given. And I don't think we'd be doing our job if things didn't get a little heated at times and everything was a checkmark. So I appreciate the discussion. And with that, I will announce that the next study session will be held back in our original location of the sixth floor council conference room next Wednesday, April twelfth, beginning at five PM. And thanks to some IT upgrades, there's the option to, for folks to watch. Again, can't, no participation, but you're allowed to watch us in person. And you can attend via Zoom and watch remotely as well. So I'm looking forward to being able to do that. And with that, that concludes tonight's regular council business. Meeting is adjourned.